...last 133 years. And whereas the Watkins Company is best known as a manufacturer of natural flavoring and food products, including vanilla extract, black pepper, cinnamon, and natural food coloring. And whereas the Watkins Company is celebrating its 150th anniversary on September 14th and 15th, now therefore I am Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim September 15th, 2018, as J.R. Watkins Appreciation Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota. And that's all I have. That's the city manager if he's...
I have nothing. Thank you.
Make a roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Showmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions request and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the Human Rights Commission of Jocelyn Paylor and Owen Williams. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 3.2, appointment to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Allison Bettine. Move to approve that request?
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 3.3 is an application for off-sale intoxicating liquor license for Rosa's Liquor doing business as Third Street Liquor, or as Rosa's Liquor at 157 East Third. And Michelle Rosas Garcia is here if you have questions.
I move to approve the liquor license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion?
Good luck to her. Yes.
Good luck, Michelle. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 3.4 is the Liberty Street closure request for the Polish Museum on Sunday, October 7.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 3.5 is the St. Mary's University Picnic Operetta to be held at Unity Park on Sunday, September 16. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Is everybody here with that event? Okay.
I went to the one last year. This is fantastic. Fun, outdoor theater, a real kind of change, so it's real fun.
It sounds like it.
It sounds really interesting.
Yeah, the production is according to our agenda is Dr. Falstaff and the Working Wives of Lake County. And, you know, it's an adaptation of Mary Wives of Windsor and the music of Bruce Springsteen in a tale of northern Minnesota mining country.
It's got it all.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
It's amazing. It just really sounds, just from the title, you know, it really sounds compelling to go to and fun to do.
And it's free, I think. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.6, St. Mary's Church banner request.
Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.7 is the Service Club sign replacement.
I'd make a motion to approve the new sign replacement with the attachments of the proposed sign rendering and the Lake Park sign.
I second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
It looks very attractive.
Yes, I think it's gonna be very nice.
It's a great improvement.
It's a motion, it says we don't need any action on it though, right?
We're gonna bring a policy forward in the near future, just so that we can be clear about who's gonna go on it. We just, it's been two years, we didn't want anyone to think we'd forgotten about it. It's taken a long time to get where we are, but I appreciate Carlos's efforts.
You know, at least if you don't need an action, you're getting a consensus here.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea, I mean, obviously.
As do I.
Good follow through.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
So withdraw the motion?
Yes.
I still approve it. Item 3.8 is the annexation request for 1453 Sunny Ridge Drive.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.9 is a request for utility bill reduction for the property at 579 East Sandborn.
Is Mary Hope here? Would you like to come to the podium? I need that microphone. Lee's gonna help you with that. Well, I called you up here to see if anybody had any questions for you. I know that you put in a request for a reduction in the utility bill that I believe was your mother's, is that correct?
Right.
So, is there any kind of statement you would like to make, or?
My dad was living at the time, and he was legally blind, and both my parents are hard of hearing, very hard of hearing. And I'm assuming that what happened was the toilet upstairs, that they don't go up there, you know, because it's hard to walk, but anyway, must've been leaking. My daughter-in-law went up there and she heard it, so she turned it off. And then we got the bill, and I didn't know anything about this yet. You know, I mentioned the amount of the bill and everything to my family, and she told me that that's what she got happened.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the council, from Mary?
I'm better off with questions than I am.
Okay. That's fine. Al, were repairs made to the defective?
I can't.
Were repairs made to the toilet that was leaking?
No, just turned it off. I haven't had time yet. My dad just started working on all this other stuff, but it's turned off.
And the home is still occupied?
Yes, my mom.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll talk about it now.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I guess to get discussion going on it is that the bill is $1,389.66. I would so motion to move that the bill be reduced $389.66, making it $1,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from George and a second by Paul to reduce the bill by $389.66. Discussion? There isn't?
Yes, yes, well, so how much is the portion of the bill that is, that is just the wastewater treatment services compared to the water itself? Sometimes we reduce it by, because the water is clean, it's not, doesn't need much servicing.
Mayor and council, the sewer use is approximately $586. The water reduces $767. There's also no fine charge with that, but...
Didn't get it.
That's fair.
So $586 would be your answer.
Okay, so, so that's the, that's the treatment, that's the treatment.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the bill reduced by that much.
Okay, well, we have a motion. Al?
Well, you know, and too, this also, if you look at the average previous billing of $128, I think George's motion fits perfectly into that mix of what the bill normally would be with those components and that running toilet. So I think this is a very generous offer, and I think we are correct in, I think, moving on these requests. The city does not move forward on doing monthly billing, which might have caught this earlier. I know that the Water Department does do their best to notify clients when there's something that's amiss, but I think that these reductions are fair, given the alternative of doing monthly billing.
Anybody else? Okay, well, we can vote on the motion to reduce the bill by $389.66. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-3.
Next item is 3.10. It's a request to convert 10-minute parking on Fourth Street to two-hour parking. Make a motion to reduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I initiated this request, actually, I almost got a ticket parked in that 10-minute spot. I didn't realize there was a 10-minute spot there.
They're doing their job then.
Almost.
Almost, almost.
I'll have to talk to Jack.
Well, yeah, he was doing his job. So all abstained, but we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's one of them.
Item 3.11 is a request for no parking zone on Johnson Street for the State Historic Preservation Conference on September 14. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.12 is a request for Main Street program for the Third Space events on September 11th, 17th, and 24th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Discussion?
Can I?
Emily, would you like to?
I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Al, you have a question?
Well, if Emily's going to be up there, I'll ask her the question, then. What are the hours for it? And what barriers? You say that it's all on the sidewalk, so you see, you need barriers to block traffic. How does that fit in to doing that?
Correct. Several of the dates are sidewalk concerts, and this is a formality that we're making sure that the city knows that they're happening, but require no closures or blockages of the sidewalk whatsoever. The event on October 27th is a bit larger event. We're asking just for the streets to be closed for that day, set up beginning at about 8:00 that morning, the event starting at 4:00 p.m., going until 8:00 p.m., and tear down until approximately 10:00 or 10:30 that evening.
Okay. I thought the ones on top were tied in with the one on the bottom, but that's... Thank you.
Other, oh, Paul?
So I noticed that these businesses aren't all on Third Street, so this isn't a Third Street specific program, right?
For the most part it is. There was the one concert that they had been in talks with the Co-op prior to applying for the grant and wanted to honor that, and for one concert out of the 15, 16 projects that we had, we were just fine with it.
Anything else? Anything else you wish to add?
This is the last of the Third Space projects for this year. Just a reminder, we were a pilot project for the entire state of Minnesota, and the application for the next year and next round of grants has gone through, so if that grant is approved, we could potentially get three more years of funding for these kinds of projects from the Bush Foundation, which is really exciting.
When will you know about that funding?
It probably won't be until October, November.
Okay. Well, good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the straight state agreement for the airport ALP and snow removal equipment.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached agreement and the related resolution authorizing Keith to do what he has to do.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Al?
Yeah, I'm just questioning, I know in the past we've had the public works director executing agreements, I'm wondering, in this case, where we've had that in place, and we've had actually the mayor, city manager do the agreement, just wondering what's, what's the proper sign-off on these agreements?
Mayor and council, this is really just a matter of convenience. A lot of forms come through my office as far as minor changes, documentation that we're doing, that we're supposed to do, and this just gives me obligation to sign all those instead of bringing everything back to council. It's just really convenience for me.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2019 budgets and tax levy.
I'd make a motion to adopt the proposed 2019 budget and adopt the resolution for the proposed tax levy.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Kerry?
What's the amount? What's the increase? What did it end up to be?
Mayor and council, this is from the meetings last week on Monday night and Tuesday night. So you made some changes, and in your packet you can see that the city levy will be proposed as $8,596,403, $300, $403, and that would be a change of 5.4% from 2018 to 2019. That would be the tax levy. That's what the changes that you all proposed last week at the work session that I recorded and, and are included in this new amount here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, George.
And then with the Port Authority levy, it's $9,182, correct?
Right, the Port Authority, that number did not change last week, so that stayed at the $9,182,403 as compared to $8,714,000 the year before. And that's, and those two show separately on the tax statements, the Port District, I think it's called, versus the city of Winona.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Hey, Mary, I'm just wondering about the street reconstruction. We have the $145,000 still in there, and I thought we did some maneuvering to lower that, or is this just?
We did, we reduced the, excuse me, we reduced the tax levy, so the money actually is coming from the additional local government aid that goes to pay for the street reconstruction. $65,000 was taken out of the actual street reconstruction project and put to the, under the bridge path. So, yes, the $65,000 did get moved, yes.
But it just, on here just shows the 145, so it's where it comes from?
Right, that stayed the same, that stayed, that stayed the same. The amount that we, that we moved was actually the, the local government aid part that would have otherwise gone for, I mean, they both go for the street reconstruction, so it wouldn't make that much difference either way, but usually what, when that happens, we take it from that additional local government aid.
Bookkeeping, I get it. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a process that, yeah, it comes out the same.
Right, perfect. Thank you.
Kerry has a question?
Not a question, I just am gonna be voting against this. Now, first off, I wanna thank staff and administration for all the work they did putting this budget together. And I know that staff cut it down as much as, you know, they cut it down quite a bit, and the city manager cut it down even farther, then it came to the council, and we cut it down another approximately 2%, but I said throughout the whole process, I would've been much more comfortable with about half of that, which would've been about the 3, 3.1. So it's gonna be consistent, and we have to vote against it tonight.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-1.
Item 5.2 is the 2019 budget and levy. Announcement of the date for the public comment portion of the regular scheduled meeting will be on December 17th at 6:30 p.m.
Move to approve to set the hearing date.
Second that.
Motion by George and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 5.3 is the proposed fee ordinance for 2019.
I'd make a motion to introduce the proposed fee ordinance and to adopt the new fee ordinance for, at the September 17th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Paul?
I have a question relating to liquor licenses, and I probably won't be able to find the page here. Related to the brew pubs and the, and the micro distillery, and I was looking at those, and it just seemed like we have one brew pub, and, and there are, looks like about six fees that they get possibly hit with, so I'm just kinda looking for some clarification on there. And I honestly, I don't know what page it's on.
So the liquor licenses are on the next agenda item because under state law we have to have a separate public hearing on those.
That's separate.
But I can answer your question, the different types of licenses are regulated under state law, and it depends on if they wanna have on sale versus off sale. So the brew pub that we have in Winona currently has a small brewer taproom off sale, and that allows them to sell their product for people to take home. They also have a brewer taproom on sale, which allows them to serve people on their premises, and that license is about a third of the cost of a regular on sale and texting liquor license. And then also they have to have a separate Sunday license, because in Minnesota, the Sunday licenses are separate. So they have three licenses from the city, then they have a separate license from the state to manufacture, to brew the beer, but that's...
So all of those are pretty much required.
So they have three from the city and one from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Al?
A couple of questions on community development part, and I don't know, they don't have page numbers, so I can't refer to that, but there is a new fee apparently for, being proposed for 2019, or maybe it's a call-out of a fee that was included somewhere else about pool above ground, pool below ground. One is 65 plus state surcharge, the other is a 105 plus state surcharge, and I'm wondering what sort of pools this covers, the size of pools that we're now charging a fee for. Are we, are we talking about, is it larger? Are there certain size requirements? Is there, you know?
I think the difference is one's below ground and one's above ground.
Well, I mean, you know...
Takes two different types of inspection.
But there's, there's little kiddie waiting pools that are out there. I mean, to me, if you read this and it's pure thing, the way it's described, you know, it'd meet all pools.
I don't believe it means a waiting pool.
I know that's not the intent, and that's why I'm bringing it up, because I wanna make it clear that it's not the intent...
It is not for a waiting pool.
To charge $65 to put up a $10 waiting pool. You know, I don't wanna be, you know, thought of as the person who voted for that.
Right. Nor would I wanna be the one who introduced it.
Who proposed it.
Right.
Councilmember Thurly, I'm gonna guess that it is something that has to be inspected, which obviously a waiting pool wouldn't have to be inspected.
Oh, sure, that would make sense, though.
So I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure that to add to new fees, it is something that their inspections department has to inspect, or currently is inspecting, and they don't know where it falls in for a fee, would be my guess. So I think it's either that we're currently doing, that now we have a special line for it, that would be my guess.
That makes, that makes sense, because it's under inspection.
And one, obviously, is more work inspecting than the other, would be my guess.
And I'm sure the next one, the plumbing permits on gas and electric water heaters, same kind of logic at $18 apiece? Is that it's an inspection issue?
I would guess so, yeah, that's right. They also have something to do with the inspection, and we currently don't have a special permit for, we don't have a special line for those. They're falling into something else now, so this, I would guess clarifies it.
Okay.
That's I think what Lucy was trying to...
Breaks it down a little better.
I, I think that we do have a new, new computer system that is working, going to be working with building permits and inspections, so I think that might have precipitated putting these new lines in there, because now the system will allow for it.
For those details to be part of the record, sure.
Is going to be my guess, because we're incorporating, we've been having training on this new system, that'll make it much more efficient in the, in the community development office, so it's more like a one or two-step, instead of maybe eight steps to do a permit.
To look up the information and then look at it again.
So that's where I guess this is coming from, is that now we can actually have these, and so Lucy thought she might as well put those in, since this is for 2019.
Okay. I, I just have one comment on our last page in this, and that is on the yearly membership for the Friendship Center. This year it's 29 for single and 39 for household, or a difference between the two of $10. The proposal is to charge single $30, but households $50. So instead of a $10 difference, there's now a $20 difference. I don't know the logic behind that. I guess I'd like to hear that logic in this differentiating and increasing the costs to members of the Friendship Center.
Mayor and council, that is correct. Leah had proposed that fee primarily due to feedback she was getting that adding, in a sense, a plus one, that that difference of $10 didn't quite line up with the $29 and the $39 split, and she wanted that gap widened, because she was getting feedback that if I'm a single, I pay 29, and if I don't have another member of our household, then really shouldn't my membership be $10? So that's the feedback she was getting, so she proposed to split that and make that gap widen for that plus one.
So one goes up a dollar, the other goes up...
So the one went, the...
$11.
The one went up our standard 3% that we proposed for the recreation fees, and the other one then widened that split for the plus one, correct?
Well, it's, I guess up to them to see how that will turn out. I won't hold it against it, but I just wondered the rationale behind it.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.4 is to set the public hearing regarding liquor license fee increases for Monday, October 15. Some moves.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 5.5 is the grant application for the electric vehicle chargers. Make a motion to approve by, by the grant.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? George?
Yes, if awarded, what will this mean for us, or what will we need to do, or, if awarded?
When awarded.
When awarded. Well, when awarded, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The obligations the city would have would be to have a 20% match of the total funding cost. So our request is would be a little over $200 at the moment that we, that the city would be responsible for. We are looking for other funding donations to cover that amount. That's from a financial, that's the best we have to cover. We would be required to have two parking spots reserved for electric vehicles for, strictly for electric vehicle charging, so we would need to set aside spots in, in the lot for electric vehicles. And I believe that's really, and there also have to be, hoping for a five-year term for these chargers.
Al? I'm just curious, now that it's in, would be proposed to be in a municipal parking lot, what kind of liability does the city or would the city incur, and if so, who would cover the cost of that liability, say, for whatever reason there was an accident and involved the exposed wiring and things like that?
Ultimately, it would fall on the city's insurance, but we'd also...
Does the league cover this?
Well, yes. Under property.
Specifically?
Under property. We would double-check, but, yeah.
Yes.
And then also, of course, the manufacturer of the device itself, if there was something there that was defective, that would be an issue, of course, as well, that we would have to run down.
Yeah, but I definitely would want to get that covered or at least answered during the process of applying for the grant, just to, just to be, you know, covering our bases here.
Michelle? Michelle?
Um, just out of curiosity, so these spots have to be set aside only for electric cars?
Yes, dedicated for charging.
Is there maybe a better spot for them? One, not maybe in the downtown where we're rearranging cars, but also someplace that's maybe more accessible to traveling vehicles, like the visitor center, or somewhere that's closer to where people might be passing through town and want to stop and charge?
The, the one reason that we were thinking downtown, much like what the co-op did, is because it takes a while to recharge them. And we wanted to give people an opportunity to do some shopping or go eat.
I get that.
So, it's this balance between convenience for the traveler and our wanting them to be downtown.
I'm just concerned about losing two parking spaces when I'm not sure what the demand is yet for electrical cars, and now those two spaces would be dedicated in a spa, I mean, is there not a better downtown parking lot that's underutilized, like by Godfathers, where we also have electric? Where we could still be in the downtown, but maybe in a lot that's not as active? I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea.
Could be.
I just want to, I want to look around at where a better, I mean, Godfathers is so underutilized currently, and there is electricity there, and I wouldn't mind having my car parked in that location, walk the levee, be really close to downtown. Is that something we can look at when we apply for this grant? Or did we already say that's where they have to be, is in the lot by Midtown Foods?
We could certainly change the, uh, the grant application. Uh, one reason for the Midtown Foods or the area lot, municipal lot by Midtown Foods, is there's actually an area by where city vehicles park that we believe we can add another spot to, so that the net loss would only be one spot versus two spots. Um, and there's also, there's also a good transformer location by there. So, that was, that was partly what made this appealing. Uh, the Godfathers Lot, uh, certainly, yeah, my knowledge, isn't used as fully as other lots, so that would be available. There would be some details to work out with who owns the electricity, because my understanding is that it's currently owned by Steamboat Days. So, we would have to make an agreement to do that, and that would, that would not happen before the grant would be, would be due.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Uh, I want to concur with Michelle. I actually, uh, think that, I, I would like maybe a, a spot that's more convenient to downtown, uh, for the EV users, so that they have access to our, our businesses. Um, so, I actually think the Godfathers Lot might be a better, better spot. Here's a secondary question to that. Uh, is it possible, assuming that maybe on the chance that in the future we have an EV vehicle in our fleet, that that EV vehicle could be parked in that spot on this city lot here by Midtown, and that we could charge the vehicle there? Uh, is that something that you've considered?
Certainly, if we were to get electric vehicles, we would want to have charging where, where they are. I think the goal of this charger would be for the public to use. Uh, as part of installing this charger, we would be doing adding conduit. Uh, so, we could potentially have that factored in, that we would be adding chargers to that area, uh, or we'd have capacity with the conduit for that, that purpose. Uh, but the goal, the goal of the charger really is for public use. That's what the, I think, what the IPCA is, 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 is aiming for.
Uh, I would be happy to have my business make a contribution to those EV chargers. A month's worth of council members pay.
Other comments? Questions? All right. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item five point six is the Great River State Trail-Winona Connector concurrence. I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Comments? Questions? George?
Yeah, could, I guess, Chad, could you explain what we're doing? I talked with you a little bit today, but for everyone else's information?
Uh, Mayor and Council, the Wisconsin DOT is requesting that the city concur that using Old Highway Fifty-four through Agamemnon Park be the acceptable route for the Great River State Trail-Winona Connector, um, also known as the Flyway Trail, maybe to some of you. Um, the concurrence request is needed for the Great River State Real Tr- River State Trail-Winona Connector to proceed with their planning process as well as their environmental review. Um, I should note two things, that tonight you, um, are, in a sense, concurring with that, in that it's important to note that council is not approving funding tonight, easements, planning documents, conceptual drawings, construction drawings, or any maintenance agreements. It, it is that concurrence that the use of Agamemnon Park is solely for the purpose of preserving or enhancing the activities, features, and attributes of the park that make it eligible for protection under federal environmental protection law, section four F. And Ross Johnson from the DOT is here tonight, if you have specific questions about that federal law or any of the environmental protection questions.
George?
Could he just give us an update, or?
Sure. Thank you for your time. I appreciate, uh, listening to us tonight. Uh, I'm Ross Johnson. I'm with the Department of Transportation, our local clerk. I'm sure you are well aware of the project. Uh, thanks. It's been around for a long time. It's actually, it's, it's been around longer than I have with what I've been doing with DOT recently. Looking back in the file, uh, I go all the way back to, to, uh, two thousand and four for those first letters from the city of Winona, uh, the Boise support for the project, and, uh, it's very much appreciated. So, uh, after fourteen years, we're at a point where we're, we're starting to finalize the design, getting our environmental documentation done, and, and, uh, and are on schedule to build the project next year. So, uh, we appreciate the support with the, with the concurrence. What this is, is, uh, it's, uh, the owner of the park has to, uh, give this sort of concurrence that the impacts on the park aren't harming the park, that they're actually enhancing and preserving attributes. Uh, under federal law, when federal funds are spent on this kind of a project, and it, and it touches a public resource like a park or a wildlife refuge, those kinds of resources, uh, federal highway administration has to give its, uh, approval for how that land is used. And there's several ways in the, in the laws that that occurs. And in this case, since the project that's touching your land is not a highway project, it's actually a trail project, so, under the federal statutes, it qualifies for, for an exception. We don't have to go through a lot of extra approvals with federal highways because of the nature of this project. It's an, it's called an enhancement project. It's, it's touching a four-F property, so, uh, we can, we can save a lot of time and money by invoking an exception with federal highways. And, uh, no matter how we, how we document and treat, uh, these properties, it, uh, everything always requires some sort of concurrence from the, the owners of the property. So, that's what this is. This is the specific statutory language that, you know, we're asking you to concur with, that you've looked at the impacts, you understand what they are, and you're comfortable that the project is, uh, not going to adversely impact your park. Actually, it's going to enhance it. And I think in your handouts, there's a, I did a little write-up as, as to what the impacts are. Uh, Buffalo County is the sponsor of the project, uh, and we're, uh, Wisconsin DOT's role is to sort of oversee the, the process and the environmental and design development, to make sure all the rules are followed. Uh, they make it through the letting okay, and sort of help them through that process. And, uh, really, the big actor in all this is actually Wisconsin DNR. But the DNR doesn't really have any way to let projects, so they, they rely on the counties and the local sponsors to, to do this in, in a project, with a project like this. So, in a nutshell, that's, that's sort of where we're at, and that's, that's sort of why, you know, we're, we're looking for the concurrence that we can keep moving forward, so.
You say you intend to do this next year? Is the funding all in place?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep, Buffalo County will let it, and it's, uh, eighty percent federally funded. Uh, it's about a two and a half million dollar project. Uh, this is the expensive end. Originally, the project was conceived to go from Agamemnon Park all the way to Marshland. But because of the expense, uh, a few years ago, we, we segmented the project. We're actually, on this phase, we're going to stop at, uh, the town of Buffalo, Town Park, as a first phase. And then in the future, when more funding becomes available, the Wisconsin DNR will finish the project and run the trail all the way to Marshland. So, that, uh, Buffalo Town Park is sort of a logical intermediate trails. It, it makes sense. That's all the money we have. That's as far as we can go. It's, it's an expensive bridge.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, thank you for bringing this up, because it's been something people have been talking about for a long time.
Sure.
Um, how do you deal with the railroad tracks as part of, you know, the Wisconsin?
Sure. We have a separate process that, uh, the Wisconsin DOT is coordinating with BNSF for, uh, the easement that will need to cross the tracks and, and the circumstances of the construction, and all the impacts on their property, that we are working with them to coordinate that and make sure all that gets, gets done in time.
Because that seems to be always the, you know?
Yeah.
The difficult part of that process to get that done.
And with this project, it's been very difficult. It's been a long time, and?
Sure.
Yeah, railroad coordination is, uh, lengthy and, and difficult, yeah.
We're chuckling because I think the city deals with a ton of railroads and stuff, yes.
But, uh, I've been, I've been with this for many years, and it's exciting to see it come to fruition. I, I think it's a very beautiful project, very worthwhile.
I did see it. I couldn't read about it, so.
George, you had something?
Yeah, I know, uh, back when we were working with, uh, the wagon bridge, you know, a word that came up was tort limits. Uh, who would observe the tort limits over there, or who would be responsible for those?
Well, I'm, I'm going to talk about what kind of the legal limits are.
Well, uh, from my understanding, and correct me, Mr. Attorney, uh, tort limits meaning liability?
I mean, that's the term, or I can't comment any further on that, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, so just?
Yeah, that's really, I think that's in, uh, that's on your side of the Sydney River. So, we're, we're just concerned?
Okay.
With the part on our side, I think.
Enough said.
Might be a good question. That, that bridge, uh, it's a beautiful bridge, but it does present us some challenges that we've had to deal with. Uh, it's only posted four tons. That means to build those parts of the bridge that are south of the tracks, we, we can't get there from here. We have to do everything from the, the north side of the track. So, we will work with the railroad to, uh, build a temporary at-grade crossing there for our contractor, for the county's contractor, and they'll have to cross the tracks at grade and then move down Old Fifty-four and build the abutment in the first two piers of the bridge, and build the bridge, and then pull the crossing out. Because we can't cross the wagon trail bridge, you know?
Right.
So, it's a challenge.
Any other comments or questions? Chad?
Yes, so Mayor and Council, as Ross has alluded to, that there certainly will be some other agreements that end up coming forward to Council, to George's, uh, comment.
Right. We have a real estate process, as you saw in your, your handout. I think, uh, Buffalo County will be needing to acquire, uh, access to Old Fifty-four as their property. So, we can't build a bridge on someone else's property unless we get an easement right. So, that'll be upcoming as part of the real estate process, and you'll be hearing more about that, uh, this winter as that develops, you know?
Uh, Mayor and Council, just wanted to remind you of that, that fact. And then, just under factual piece, um, that in your packet, we did include, um, Council action from two thousand and six, when, um, action was taken with the approval of the Agamemnon Park Trail System Plan. And within that Agamemnon Park Trail System Plan, it included this regional trail. It was designated as a regional trail. Didn't have, at that time, the name. Um, or for whatever reason, at the time, the name was left off, but it was reaffirmed by that group that that would be the, the entry point to Winona, uh, would be that old Highway Fifty-four. So, it was, it was, uh, I guess, in a sense, affirmed in two thousand and six, and again, the council took action on that plan. And so, I think that's an important piece to mention, that the Agamemnon Park Committee at that time reviewed and accepted that as the regional trail entrance. And then finally, Mayor and Council, just wanted to remind everybody, I think everybody's aware, but just for the record, that this is a, a section that we talk about a lot, um, to connect to Wisconsin. So, we talk about, um, in our budget meetings, from Levy Park to the top of the river, to the small connector that we just talked about approving funding for, that gets you to the bridge, then gets you to Latch Island, that gets you to Agamemnon Park, that gets you to Wisconsin. I mean, these, these are some of those last, uh, connector pieces that will connect us to a much broader system.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I know, uh, the road you're talking about, I know, in the sixty-five flood near the railroad tracks, that was damaged that road quite severely, and, and of course, it sat like that from sixty-five to now. And there's also some private land there as well, too. How does that play into the puzzle?
We'll be, uh, we'll be seeking to, uh, or the county will be seeking to acquire an easement from those private property owners, yeah. Uh, we've already, we had a meeting already. I met with them. They're very nice people, and they're, sort of showed what the impacts are. But, but you're right, when, uh, Old Fifty-four was abandoned back in nineteen forty-two, when, when, uh, half went to Winona, and then half went to that adjacent property owner. So, they actually do own, there's a private parcel on that west side out there. We'll have to acquire an easement from them for that.
It used to be the quarter-mile drag strip years ago.
I, I tell you, that's, uh, given the age, given the age of that concrete pavement, it's, uh, we're challenged to build something as durable nowadays. When you look at the condition of that old pavement, it's really in nice shape.
And all the flooding it's been subject to as well.
Yeah. Maybe it's the, the water curing or what it is here.
Maybe it was, yes.
Paul?
Well, I, I can't, uh, tell you how excited I am. I can tell you the cycling community in the Winona area is, is pumped up for this connector, and, and it will, uh, be, uh, a great addition to, uh, the, the menu of outdoor recreation options that we have in, in Winona. And I think it will be an economic, uh, player for both Buffalo County and the city of Winona. And I'm really psyched that this is coming. It'll be a great deal.
Thank you. And I think that, uh, having the trail open and, uh, having that, that old pavement available, I think really helps satisfy the, the vision of, uh, Mr. Latch, when he originally donated that land. Uh, you have, uh, uh, very ready access, and people who want to bike or walk, or, or, you have nature photography, you, you know, bring school groups out there. It's, it's, uh, it's an area that can accommodate a lot of uses and, as an entry to that park, and not be in conflict with each other. You have a full, twenty-four-foot width will clear that out, and it's just a nice approach to the bridge, and it really is an enhancement. It really opens that mark up and, uh, makes it, uh, uh, you, you know, very available to people. So, it is exciting, you know? Keith is excited, too.
I saw that. Heard that.
We can tell, yeah.
Can't contain themselves.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item five point seven is the Levy Park Events and the Boathouse Restaurant Agreement. Make a motion to approve the staff request and authorize the city manager and clerk to execute this agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Question?
Pam?
Yes, uh, okay, the agreement is that one of the, one of the points is to play amplified music past ten PM. That's, that's a bit big. How much past ten PM? Till two AM?
Um, Mayor and Council, so we, we put that always in our agenda packets, because the ordinance for the park says we can't play amplified music past ten PM. And so, that's the way it's written, as it's past ten PM, and so, we always, I guess, write it that way. If you want to put a timeline on this, that's totally cool. We're not going to play music till?
Two AM.
Two AM. Because I don't think we are.
You set a limit, then they will.
So, if you want us to put, if you want to put a limit on it, you certainly can. It just follows the language of the ordinance for the park.
I, I do not want to, to put a limit on it, given what you've just said.
George?
You see, Ed's out there. Does he have anything to say?
No, we're just excited to get people down to the levy and have a little social.
All right. Guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Pam, you want to start?
Yes, I would. Um, I wanted to share with you something that I really liked out of the Winona Daily News today. Uh, Lee Gundesheimer, Winona's arts director, was interviewed, um, and there's a, there's a podcast of that interview. And one thing he said that really struck me was, "If you want to improve your community and make it great, show up to city meetings and be vocal, and let your voice be heard, not just to cause controversy, but to actually roll up your sleeves and take part in what the community is doing. There are lessons in compromise and seeing as many different points of view as possible, and being open to other ideas." I, I just thought that was, that was just exactly where Winona is at, and I would encourage people to sign up for the few openings left on the city's committees. The Heritage Preservation Committee and Human Rights Committee could, could use some, some more participation. And, um, that's it. I just thank you for saying it that way, Lee, and I think it does, it does really get us all involved in, in our community and learning how to be a community.
All right, Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I, two other events I would like to announce to the, uh, public here, and, and that would be, uh, the Dakota Gathering that's coming weekend, Saturday and Sunday, at Unity Park. Um, it's, uh, welcome to all. And, um, on, uh, Saturday, uh, September fifteenth, the Rotary Ride the Ridges, um, will be taking place, uh, starting from Winona Middle School, and there will be options to ride twenty-five, forty, sixty, or one hundred miles. In case you're interested. So, um, in there, uh, if you Google Ride the Ridges, you'll come, you'll come across the registration page.
Okay. Thank you. George?
Hey, thank you. Uh, thanks to the Brew and, Brew and Q, uh, crew this past weekend. Very, very job, very good job, well, well done. So, thanks again for all your time and effort. Uh, this Saturday, if you- This Saturday, if you happen to see a gentleman walking around town that looks like Joe Montana, it will be him, because he is in town this weekend for the Maury Miller Athletic Banquet, which is held, I believe, out at Signatures, and it raises funds for athletic events. So that will be Joe. If you think he looks like him, that more than likely will be him. And also belated birthday wishes to my wife, Carol Borzakowski, who celebrated her birthday yesterday. Happy birthday. Thank you.
He didn't say how many.
No, no.
Michelle?
Only Al knows.
The sister city application process has started. If you're an adult and you want to go, you can reach out to me and I can get you an application. Just a word of warning, thirty people have already picked up applications, which is kind of frightening when I think about having to go through them, but there's still, we're looking always for more community members to apply. Our Japanese sister city will be here October twenty-fourth, and this year, for the first time, they are going to put on a Japanese cultural fair for the city of Winona. Tickets are very limited, and it will be held at the Historic Society. You have to reach out to them to get tickets. It'll be that Saturday from nine to noon. That's all I have.
Jerry?
Everybody's been singing the praises of the crew and everybody at the Brew and Q, and I'd like to echo that. We were in a, turned here in a row, we competed, which gives us a little more unique feel for it. All the other competitors, you know, they talk, et cetera, et cetera, and they all say the same thing. They're saying how Winona is, if not the best, certainly one of the nicest, if not the nicest, town to come to, not only just due to the river, but due to the people. So that's always great to hear, so.
Thank you. Al?
I had the opportunity to be a guide for visitors to our community again today who were stopping here, because the American Duchess Steamboat had to make an unexpected visit because of some travel conditions on the river. And I echo what Jerry just said, that the people that I talked to that are traveling on that boat were very appreciative of Winona and its hospitality. And to a person, all of the stops that we were at, which included the typical ones in downtown and around the area, were well received, and most people were just simply amazed at the Minnesota Marine Art Museum. I mean, they all said that this is a once, or a unique facility in the world that they have. And these are people from all over, there were people from Australia and other countries that I've talked to on the coach, and it was just a unanimous approval and just wonderment that Winona has such attractions in our community. So I guess it ties into all of the arts that are going on, the culture and the places people can go and see and do, and we need as citizens sometimes to appreciate them every day and not take them for granted. Sad note, I'd just like to offer sympathy and condolences to the family of Ann Peterson. Ann, a well-known person in Winona primarily, most of her career was at Merchant's Bank. She passed away on August twenty-fifth, so sympathy to her husband Gordy and their family. Thank you.
I hadn't heard that.
And under the consent agenda, there are three items: approval of the minutes from August twentieth, and the final adoption of two ordinances: one to extend the no-parking school zone by Jefferson School, and the second to make changes in limited-time parking in the downtown area.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
Have a good week. Stay dry.